About um about the beautiful day in Hawaii we have. Um I'm pretty sure a lot of you Hilo staff that came over over Satter Road, it must have been beautiful. Um so we always have to appreciate that we do live here in Hawaii. Um just want to start off with that comment. Uh first thing I want to do is um I'm calling the meeting to order and I want to introduce our um. Um commissioners, we do just have quorum today, so to my far left, we have Commissioner Inaba. Then we have Vice Chair Nobori Kawa.
Aloha.
And to my right, we have Commissioner Rodriguez.
Good morning.
And I am Chair Al. Um also to my left, we have um Corporation Council. Um she is filling in for our normal Corporation Council and her name is uh Diana Melanie Lacy. So welcome. And we also have uh Planning Director Jeff Darrow uh here in the room too for any uh questions or comments or follow-ups. Um individuals that want to testify, please uh go see staff to your left um uh to sign up to testify. Our written testimony related to any agenda items should also be submitted to staff. Uh attendees that are in in the um in attendance, please turn off your cell phones. And the public restrooms are right behind you and drinking fountains. Um at this time, what we're gonna do is we're gonna do public testimony. Um if anybody wishes to testify in public at this time for all or any agenda item. Um and do we have anybody present that's gonna testify in person?
Uh Chair, we do not have anybody signed up to testify in person at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh do we have any uh online or Zoom testimony?
Yes, Chair, we do have Zoom testifiers. We have a total of two um people who would like to testify at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, let's move forward with uh testimony, please.
Thank you, Chair. Our first testifier would will be Simi McMichael, followed by Claire LaPrenzi. Simi McMichael, can you please unmute yourself and turn on your camera or your video so that you may be sworn in? Oops, sorry, Simi McMichael is not present. So we're going to move to Claire LaPrenzi. Claire LaPrenzi, can you please turn on your video so you may be sworn in?
Okay, um I'm I always tell the truth and I put my hand up in the air like this. And now now I've done what you want me to do.
Thank you for swearing in. Um Ms. LaPrenzi, you will have three minutes to testify on each agenda item that you've signed up for. So since you're testifying on multiple agenda items, please let us know when you've finished the first item. This will allow us to reset the timer. If you don't indicate when you're done with the first item, your total speaking time will be limited to three minutes. Can you please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin?
Um oh Claire Claire LaPrenzi Koinoa Nohoi Ika um Honokohao Iki um the Ahupoa. Um and then I'm gonna go now into um I'm gonna be brief on most of those, but I I'm gonna read the the uh and I'll do the SMA on on I'll go for that first. And if I'm if it goes over three minutes, I'll use it for the next ones, then I go into a couple others. Um I'm an indigenous practitioner for about forty years and my Moku Kuhau has eight generations of Mo- Moorish descent. The first navigators to the Polynesian Islands. I'm here to remind the Commission that of its legal duty to protect the SMA under Hawaiian lie law. The SMA is governed by Coastal Zone Management Act, HRS Chapter two oh five A. And the responsibility is clear. No development may be approved unless this Commission finds that it is will not have any substantial substantial adverse environment or ecological effect, will not interfere with public access and along the shore the line, will not adversely affect traditional customary practices um under uh Article twelve, Section seven of the Hawaii Constitution and the Kapakai Analysis. It's consist is in is consistent with the objectives and policy of the State Coastal Zone Management and the Hawaii General Plan. This means that your role is not simply to approve development, but to safeguard this shoreline, cultural practices and the environment for current and future generations. If there's any doubt that these criteria can be made, if there's any doubt that this criteria can limit, the Commission must either deny the application or require stronger condition studies or mitigations. The SMA law exists to balance development with the protection of public trust resources, cultural practices, and the environmental stewardship. Commissioners who ignore these duties risk not only undermining public trust, but also having their decisions overturned on appeal. I respectfully urge this Commission to uphold its kuliana, protect the shoreline, ensure access, preserve Hawaiian rights, and follow the law under HRS two oh five A dash twenty-six. Mahalo for your intention your attention and your service to the people of Hawaii. Um before, I mean, I've been doing this for a long time and I think some of you know me and some of you don't. I we have had a conflict of interest with a lot of the commissioners that have been on there. Uh and and in fact, it's very few. Um when we look at who just voted recently, Gonzalez was the only one. And the this if you have a conflict, please get off. Because I know that this is a volunteer thing for you, but if you have a conflict with development, with um doing doing things for other people, um no matter what link that they have, please get off because we've we've we will work to get that. Because um and and there's some one on this this council that has been removed because already because of of interests um that he has.
Thirty seconds left.
And um and he recused himself and now he's back on. So why is that? So the second thing I'm gonna go into is the hen. Uh that that is um number five. Um I think it's Bill fifty-two. Um on that one, yes, you should have hens in in the Hawaiian homelands everywhere. Hens are fine and and when you when you if you don't have hens and I mean, you know, of course, you'd you'd keep them, you know, in in their cages and and you know, or in a caged area. Um everything can be used, you know, their feces is not, you know, gonna attract all this flies and stuff. All of us that know how to work with hens are grateful for them and they make the compost. And and every and and all of the areas, everybody should have hens. Roosters is another thing. That's noisy, but the hens are amazing. So that that should be a no-brainer. Um the SMA area on sixty-three on the dwelling. Um it's 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 an absolute that that these these projects that are coming up with, you know, right now, the one on 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 Ali Drive, uh two-story. Why? I mean, the there's there's Kapuna Evi, Evi Kapuna, I'm sorry, Evi Kapuna. There's you're already doing stuff in the oceans that are illegal, like down at Banyans, you know, putting in putting in posts and stuff that you could you could hurt these surfers. You know, look at there's a reason why this this distance needs to be more. Because we know what's happening that of with the water. So we look in if you're not studying what's happening in in Honolulu, again, I would wonder and why they they made it bigger and and I know Simi will cover got that in inches. But um why? Why is this even up for for at all? You know, how many how many how many archaeologists and 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 how come? Um and I want to talk a little bit about the SMA because we went in for and did something with Hi-Cris and what what happened? We worked two years at Evi Kapuna and then they sold it anyway. They they allowed it to happen. There were Evi Kapuna. There was it was a it was a a chief. It's right there in Kalu and they they just stopped Hi-Cris. So how corrupt is that after two years of of service? And and a lot of us that are doing this, we're not going away. You know, we can't. It is our kuliana to make sure that you guys are doing your thing. And I've gotten from one of the members on there a a a text like, you can't tell people that they can get off, they should get off the thing. Well, I can't say those things because they they are they are the legal law. So that was really rude. I mean, I have a right to be able to say this. I'm brave enough to do it because people are not going to appreciate that. But I'm just saying, we're not going away. It is our kuliana to do this. And when you look at these areas, what about the drug? I mean, the prostitution trafficking of our children? Do you know that how high it is now? You know, so when we look at these these areas and 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 why did the, you know, Hawaiian homelands, why did they give the airport that access for private planes and the military? That's how they're getting in. Do we not care about our children? So for us that are gonna speak out, we're gonna speak out strongly. Um I think that um those were the the.
You have thirty seconds left.
Yeah, um so I'll just go on the the dwellings on the zone. I I forget which one is that. I don't know if that's sixty-three if I did that. There's another one too. It's one, two, three, four, and five I was gonna go on. So but I'm not gonna go for much more time. I I think you all know who I am and I think you all know why we get here and and the handful of us that are always gonna get there. And I'm so grateful for one person that spoke up last time on the right way. Gonzalez, I'm really grateful that you're there because we need someone on there. It was.
Your time is up on this item unless you're moving to a different item.
Yeah, I just I just read what I was gonna read go to, but so either one, two, three or I I gotta I. But anyway, I'm just I'm gonna stop there. I'm just very grateful for that Gonzalez on that Mahina was there before, that there's one person that's Pono and that's all I see. And everybody else just shaking hands and just doing business as usual and it's sad. And we're not going away. Okay, have a great day.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. Mahalo, um Ms. LaPrenzi, we heard you. Thank you very much. Thank you for testimony.
You urged me to come again? I will. Bye.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Do we have any other testifiers on Zoom?
Um I know that I think Simi's coming down there. That's what she told me this morning, so she'll probably.
Chair, um I can speak uh regarding the testifiers. We don't have um testifiers unless I wanted to make sure that um currently Jeremy McComer is on as a participant. But I believe that he is an applicant.
Yes.
So that would that would be all.
Very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh so at this time, um we're gonna go ahead and do approval of our um minutes. So did uh fellow commissioners have uh time to review the minutes for May fifteen, twenty twenty-five, which is our last meeting? So could I get a motion, please? Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Uh I make a motion to approve the minutes of the uh previous meeting. Um Rebecca Inaba, I will second.
Okay, thank you very much. Um so uh motion was made by Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, seconded by uh Commissioner Inaba. Um if you're all in favor, please indicate by waving or say aye. Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Thank you. So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our agenda. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna take item number three and item number four first. And um uh the applicant, Mr. Church, um wants to defer. Um but I do understand that we may have somebody uh to testify.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, uh Simi McMichael would like to testify on these two items. Simi, can you come up to the the table? Simi, please raise your right hand to swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Leeward Planning Commission. Thank you. Um since you're testifying on two items, please let me know when you're transitioning to the second item. And I'll uh let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. Please state your name and the town you reside in and you may begin.
Uh my name is Simi McMichael and I reside in Kailua Kona. Um I'm gonna testify now on item three. And I oppose it because it's on the coastline. Um this project is a major development. It's two point two five million dollars. Um the land itself um on Lee Drive is all about erosion. And we're losing our beachfront property. And they say the sea level is rising. It's already risen. At Kalu in two thousand seventeen, it was the cesspool in the shoreline eighty feet back, twenty years ago on that. And so this property keeps reading fifteen thousand two hundred and three square feet. And that was of nineteen ninety-seven. And of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, they lost approximately nine hundred sixty-five square feet. When you build on the ocean front, you have a setback. Here, it's saying in the Kona Community Development Plan, on our coastline, it should be a thousand feet back. And so what happens to the structures that are now there? They keep building these rock walls to protect their development. And they do it illegally and then they go after the fat. So this is wrong because our sites are so sensitive that they even put these rebars into the shoreline, into the water, into the reef, put their flags up so that they can protect their cement while the surfers are in the water. Once it was a a spring break and I had to call DLNR because the kids could have got killed with that rebar sticking out. And it's hard to control. County will say it's county, DLNR will say it's DLNR. Our ocean should be left alone, especially the oceanfront. You have sacred sites, historic sites, Kamaku Honu, Keala Nahiihi and Kahalou. But Kahalou is taking the brunt because I explained to the US Corps of Engineers who are doing a ten million dollar study on how to protect our Menihuni Rock Wall and our reefs. So what happens is when they keep building these concrete structures.
You have thirty seconds remaining on the first item.
It's like a bowling alley. It just rushes. Anytime you see those small tsunami, it wipes out. Everything goes into that parking lot. The structures, the pavilions, they're all falling apart. It it's fast forward and we have to stop it. This is our culture. Surfing is really important. This Saturday is for mental illness for the surfers are gonna do a paddle out worldwide because surfing is our culture and it's our sanity. And I love it. So I have to protect for the next generation. Okay, I'll move on to four.
Yep.
Okay. So this SMA is actually two thousand and five. It's now twenty twenty-five. And Scott Church was actually on the board of the Leeward Planning to extend this this project. He is now developer too, so I think it's a conflict of interest. But the last one, it said that it had seven years to complete. That was March sixteen, two thousand seventeen. So this is expired. So I wanted to bring up something else about why I wanna why I'm so passionate about it because I was brought up in Honolulu. And I sent you photos because it says a thousand words. My photo is a five-year-old riding a horse at Diamond Head. Behind it is Diamond Head. That was Diamond Head Stables. Now it's the the tennis courts. But on Sundays, we were allowed to ride horses in Kapialani Park. My life was dancing hula, going to the beach and riding horses. So there was only two hotels back then. And it several small apartments, but mainly cottage homes and grass shacks, made garage makeshift. And if you look at Kalakaua, now it's not even affordable. You go to Kahala, that's not affordable. So now you look at Ali Drive. It it's the whole scenario of you're gonna duplicate it and you're gonna go inch by inch. By by the twenties, I said I needed to get out of there. This is not a place I wanted my family to grow up. I moved to Kona. It was the next best. I mapped it out. And all we were into then was sports. I opened the first surf shop ever in Kona and that was nineteen seventy-eight. And now I'm the oldest and that's forty-six years. And life was great then. We had less than five thousand people and we had no traffic light. We had little supermarkets, Emma and Ward Kuata, little tiny markets and now it's just crazy. It's all millionaires and billionaires. I and it's, I know, this is too much.
Um you have thirty seconds left.
One thing about this land and all of Ali Drive, it's sacred. It has a lot of mana. And the burials, there's thousands of burials and a lot of them are five hundred years of establishment. This project, Mrs. Nagai, Linda Nagai, in two thousand and three testified, there was a bit Hawaiian burial there. I spoke to her and her dad was in the nineteen forties. It was a Hawaiian burial. And next thing you know, it was bulldozed. So that's why I had a sense of what happened here. Why? Why it took twenty-something years and couldn't be built? Because it's mana. It's bad. She says, you know.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you. Mahalo. Please say no.
Mahalo, Ms. Michaels, for your testimony. Thank you for your time. Thank you. So uh back to the agenda item, agenda item number three and agenda item number four. Um due to the applicant's request, uh we will defer it. Um would Mr. Church like to have a few words if you choose to? Uh can you please come to the mic so we can swear in?
Mr. Church, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Leeward Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a few words. Um I am indeed the applicant and have not been here for a number of years since I was actually sitting in in your places for four years as planning commissioner. And um some things have come up. I'd like to formally address uh the letters that were received in opposition to that for one. And also, I'm missing a planning consultant today. But the application really after over an eight-year period of ownership has gone from twelve units when I bought the land, which they had an SMA, which was just too much, to fourplex, which I I recently thought too much and felt that I should simply apply for the lowest density possible in that zoning, a single-family home, which in fact I may end up moving into. But anyway, I thought it best to do what I said and ask for a continuance.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um I don't believe we need a vote for this, right?
Uh no, the vote is to make the decision.
Okay, item number three and item number four will be deferred to the next meeting. So Mr. Church, please consult with the Planning Department uh 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 for uh to be put on the next agenda item. So we're gonna go to agenda item number one, applicant HICDC. Um amendment PL Res twenty twenty-four zero 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 six six, application for amendment to condition M, affordable housing and condition N, fair share contribution of change of zone ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-five, which classified a fourteen thousand three hundred twenty-one acre portion of a larger two hundred thirty-seven point five acre parcel of land from an agricultural one acre A one A zoning district to a single-family residential ten thousand square feet RS ten zoning district. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Koi High Road and Wailea Drive, Koi High Second, Lani, Keppu, Waimea, South Kohala, TMK three six two zero zero one zero seven five. Um Mr. K, can we please have staff presentation?
Yes, uh thank you, Chair Al and members of the Leeward Planning Commission. I want to echo what the Chair said earlier. Uh lucky we live here in Hawaii and I count myself lucky to be able to work with you fine volunteers. So thank you. Good morning. Um as the Chair stated, uh this first agenda item is an amendment to a change of zone ordinance uh that this Commission heard back in twenty twenty-four. The subject property uh indicated by the star here is uh situated in the South Kohala District of Hawaii Island, uh more specifically in the Ouli area. It's Makai of the Anekona and Kanehoa subdivisions. Uh just uh by way of refreshing you, the proposed development for uh the entitlements that were granted uh was to develop a forty-three lot, one hundred percent affordable, single-family residential subdivision with a minimum of ten thousand square foot lots and related improvements on fourteen point three two one acres of land. The proposed project will occur on two non-contiguous areas, uh first being a thirteen point oh oh five acre section that will support thirty-nine lots. That's project area one. And the second being a one point three one six acre section that will support four additional lots, project area two. Uh the project will provide building sites for the HICDC self-help and turnkey housing program for low-to-moderate income households, all of which will be in the County of Hawaii's Affordable Housing Guidelines. Uh HICDC's intent is to provide as many self-help homes as possible, given the federal funding limitations. Uh here's the applicant's site plan again, uh just showing those two areas uh off of Wailea Drive. Um the project area one here and project area two here. So uh the applicant is requesting to amend to conditions uh as follows. Uh amendments to condition M, affordable housing and condition N, fair share contribution of change of zone ordinance twenty-five twenty-five, which reclassified a fourteen point three two one acre portion of a larger two hundred thirty-seven point five acre parcel of land from an agricultural one acre uh zoning district to a single-family residential ten thousand square feet zoning district. Uh and they propose the following amendment language uh to delete uh the entirety of condition M as it is written and to replace it with the following language, and I'll read it, is to ensure that the goals and policies of the housing element of the general plan are implemented, the applicant shall comply with the requirements of Chapter eleven, Article one, Hawaii County Code related to affordable housing policy. This requirement shall be approved by the administrator of the Office of Housing and Community Development as evidenced by an executed and recorded affordable housing agreement, which shall be provided to the Planning Department by the applicant prior to final subdivision approval. Fair share requirements under condition N shall be conditionally waived for affordable housing units or lots if the applicant executes an affordable housing agreement to provide fifty to one hundred percent of the development as affordable housing units or lots. If the affordable housing units or lots are not produced and sold or rented in accordance with the affordable housing agreement, any fair share requirements under condition N that were waived will become due and payable. The second condition uh they're asking to amend is condition N, and this is the standard fair share condition. I won't read the entire thing. I'll just uh highlight the changes. The applicant is requesting to add the following language as is underlined. Should the applicant develop residential lots on the subject property, uh then they shall make their fair share contribution as indicated. Uh there were some changes here uh to designate instead of residential unit uh because the outcome of this is gonna be a subdivision and the creation of lots. They wanted to change unit to lot. Uh and then finally uh to delete the reference uh to um uh at the bottom, basically saying that uh the fair share will be waived uh if if it's affordable. And so that was addressed in the previous uh condition change as well. So uh, the reason for this request is uh the purpose of these amendments is to allow uh H I C D C to utilize the county of Hawaii's Affordable Housing Production Program to help develop the Koaiia Affordable Housing Subdivision on the subject property. Uh, the Affordable uh Housing Pro- Production Program uh was created in twenty twenty two via amendment to chapter eleven, a housing of the Hawaii County Code, which appropriates at least five million dollars annually to the County Office of Housing and Community Development to facilitate programs that support affordable housing production. Uh, in its twenty twenty four rezon amendment application, H I C D C committed to dedicating a hundred percent of the forty three planned lots for affordable housing. And this commitment was formalized in condition M of the subject rezon ordinance. At the time of the rezoning, neither the applicant nor the planning department were aware that this condition language conflicts with the uh Affordable Housing Production Program's funding rules. Specifically, uh their administrative rules state the affordable housing units required by receipt of program funds shall not be used to fulfill any other obligation for affordable housing units as required by law or other subsidy obligations. Due to this provision, H I C D C is currently unable to apply A H P funds toward the forty three lots mandated by condition M, since those lots are being used to meet a zoning ordinance condition. To resolve the conflict, the planning department collaborated with uh Office of Housing and Community Development to develop standard affordable housing condition language that aligns with A H P rules and encourages the development of additional affordable housing lots or units by offering incentives such as relief from fair share requirements in return for voluntarily providing affordable units well beyond the twenty percent required by housing code. The proposed amendments are consistent with the new standard condition language and satisfy the intent of the original condition M, which is to create a significant number of affordable lots. Finally, the applicant proposes revisions to condition N to clarify that for fair share purposes, the relevant metric should be the number of lots created rather than the number of housing units as currently stated in the condition. The planning director recommends one modification to condition N, and it's the removal of the applicant's proposed introductory clause, which states, should the applicant develop residential lots on the subject property? Um, the reason for this is that that conditional phrasing is more appropriate in the context of a commercial zoning, where residential development is permitted but not required. However, because the subject property is own single family residential ten thousand square feet, the creation of residential lots is an expected outcome. As such, the inclusion of this qualifying language is unnecessary. Uh, with that, the planning director is recommending a favorable recommendation be forwarded to the county council uh for the amendment request with the stated modification to condition N. I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. K. Um, before we move forward, uh just want to uh get a confirmation from each commissioner that you've you have reviewed all the materials for all the agenda items today?
Aye.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. K? No, okay, can we go ahead and have the um applicant, Mr. McComber, are you there?
Good morning.
Mr. McComber, have you um uh uh um reviewed the conditions by the plan? Are you okay with the uh revised condition from the planning director?
Yes.
Okay, um, go ahead and start with your presentation. Thank you. Um, can I swear you in first? Do you swear to tell the truth in front of the Leeward Planning Commission today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. McComber. Uh, please state your name and uh where you reside before you get started.
Sure, uh Jeremy McComber, Hawaii Island Community Development Corp, Chief of Operations. There's not really, I I don't think I really have anything more to say, because uh Mr. K provided a pretty thorough explanation. But as he stated, which is sort of the primary premise for the request for amendment. Um, because the condition previously or currently indicates that we're providing a hundred percent affordable, which is what we always do. Um, it therefore penalizes us from applying for the funding source that was represented, the county's Affordable Housing Production Program. So that's problematic for us and and hence uh we're requesting the modification of the condition. So that we're able to apply for that funding source.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McComber. Um, commissioners, do you have any questions? For the applicant, uh Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Uh, good, thank you, Chair Al. So Mr. McComber, I just wanted to um make sure that you were uh in a agreement with the amendments that have been proposed by the planning department for this.
Yes, we are in agreement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez? Uh, yes, um, uh, wha- what's up? I have two questions, the what what's the price going to be on those homes? And uh is there a a s- a safety plan, a fire evacuation plan for that area?
Um, so tho- it's a, those questions are definitely related to each other. I think um we are currently evaluating various design concepts, um which factor in fire and wind hazard. And the project will have an evacuation plan. Um, that will be contingent on the complete design of that parcel. And because we're still in the design evaluation process and we're also having to determine what resources would fund the project, we are not sure yet what the price of the units will be. Um, a big part of that is that the mortgages are typically funded through the U S Department of Agriculture's Rural Development Program. And that program is currently being threatened. It's been the program that we've utilized primarily to do the self help program. And it offers a variety of benefits, which include um extending the mortgage term, very low interest rates. And so part of determining the final pricing for the project will be contingent heavily on whether that program will be revived in the new federal budget. So I I apologize, but I it's a question I just I'm not able to answer right now.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. McComber? No. Okay, well, um, I will be happy to entertain a motion so we can have a discussion. Thank you, Mr. McComber. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Uh, thank you, Chair Al. I move that a favorable recommendation on P L R E Z twenty twenty five zero 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 seven nine slash amend P L R E Z twenty twenty four dash zero 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 six six be forwarded to the county council on the applicant's proposed amendments to condition M affordable housing and condition N their ha- their share contribution of change of zoning ordinance number twenty five dash twenty five based on the planning director's recommendations, which shall be adopted.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second?
I second.
Okay, um, motion was made by Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, uh seconded by Commissioner Inaba. Um, any discussions, commissioners? Um, Commissioner Inaba?
Thank you. So um, I have a hard time supporting language that changes the intent, the original intent of what the applicant wanted to do, which is one hundred percent affordable housing. H H I C D, that's their miss- it's their mission and they do really, really good work. So it appears that there's like one rule that's bringing this whole thing to the surface as far as them having to change their um amount of affordable housing in order just to get the um the funding. So where is, where where does that rule originate from? I mean, this whole thing that's making this stuck, where is that?
Thank you, uh, yeah.
Can you answer that question, Mr. K?
Sure, yeah, as as I understand it, uh, it is comes from the uh the operating rules for the Affordable Housing Production Program, uh that again was created in in twenty twenty two. Um, if I can speak to the first concern, the applicant uh still is going to do a hundred percent affordable housing. Uh, the way that the condition language was written originally said as represented by the applicant, a hundred percent of these forty three lots would be affordable. Um, because the uh the rules of the Affordable Housing Production Program say if it's required by an ordinance, you can't use this funding source because of the way the original condition was written. Um, that was why it was problematic. So at this point, um, the way that the new condition language is written will still allow them to develop a hundred percent affordable housing. It just takes away the requirement language in the ordinance, um, so they can use this funding source. So I I there's gonna be no change, as I understand it, to the applicant's project relative to a hundred percent affordable. It's just changing the condition language to uh allow them to use the afford, the county's Affordable Housing Production Program. Um, and uh, Mr. McComber, if I'm speaking out of turn, uh, please feel free to to step in and and address that as well.
No, sir, you're on point.
Okay, so what what we're doing right now is a workaround?
Uh, not a workaround as such. It's basically just changing the condition language so that they can use this uh important funding source to develop their affordable housing. Um, we were unaware, uh, our, in the past, when we've had representations from an applicant saying we're going to do X amount of affordable housing. In our condition language, we've said, as represented by the applicant, they're going to do this. Um, but because that was formalized in a condition of the ordinance, the way that O- Office of Housing and Community Development viewed that is it's a requirement of law of the ordinance, and that unfortunately wouldn't allow the applicant to utilize that funding source because of the rules of the funding source. Again, uh, just to to clarify, the project is going to remain the same. This is just changing the con- uh, the ordinance language to help them access another funding source. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, did you have a question?
Uh, a comment more than a question. Uh, so thank you, Commissioner Inaba, for that question. Thank you for clarifying that, uh, Mr. K. Um, so now it is clear in my mind also that we're trying to allow use of funds so that this project can go forward. And I think um if for me personally, I think that is a good idea for us to uh do whatever we can to provide as much affordable housing in this county as possible. So thank you for working this out.
Commissioner Rodriguez, did you have a question or?
Uh, yes, I I'm a question, uh, you know, I I I'm for affordable housing, I think it's great. But uh, safety, you know, is there a, because it tends to be a dry area out there. Is there a safety plan? Is that a requirement for approval? Because, you know, uh, we have some subdivisions, you know, they're supposed to be like Waik- Waikolo, they're supposed to be working on evacuation plans and safety or is there anything placed there?
I can speak a little bit to the um where this project is in proximity to uh, the uh Anekona Volunteer Fire Station, which is on the adjacent parcel Amalka. Um, and I believe uh as I believe there is a an allowance for an emergency evacuation, and as Mr. McComber stated, that's a certainly a concern that they're going to take into account as they go through the design of this subdivision.
Yeah, so so it is a, that is a requirement to get it approval or not? Because I don't know what.
I'm I'm not sure that uh, if I recall correctly, I don't think that there was any uh condition in the original ordinance that compelled that. Um, certainly, uh, when they go through uh the design of their subdivision, um, they're going to have to have sufficient uh fire suppression water available and things like that. And as the applicant stated, I believe that they're going to be uh designing in uh an evacuation uh plan as part of their project. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Inaba, did you have a question? Your light is on or a comment?
I'm still trying to figure this out.
Um, uh, since we're in discussion, I just want to make a couple of comments about uh um this agenda item. You know, H I C D C has been around a long time doing projects like this. Uh, um, affordable housing projects that benefit the community. And you know, funding is 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 a huge issue. You know, the projects get approved, but they have to get funded. And H I C D C is very creative on making these projects happen. And there is a definite need for this uh type of project, affordable housing in general. Uh, to address um um Commissioner um Rodriguez, uh, one of his questions about fire mitigation. Um, fire mitigation is on the mind of everybody in that area. I live in Waikolo Village, and that's one of the top discussions, wildfire and wildfire mitigation. And developers on this whole island, and especially on the west side, they i- i- it is in their mind. Almost every developer um has to tackle wildfire mitigation or have to has to have something in in their plan to address the community, because to be honest, that's one of the community's biggest concern right now. Um, and and uh, I believe uh H I C D C came in front of us uh several months ago, and they did um put it on record that they are mindful of wildfire mitigation and evacuation. So I mean, I just wanted to make that comment, and I do appreciate it, and I'm in full support of this motion. Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, uh, uh, um, you know, I I would feel more comfortable if there was like uh something in writing instead of uh, you know, being mindful, because I think, you know, here, uh, you know, we're growing and we're on an island and, you know, just uh, it's a lot of issues that, you know, like uh safety that we have and uh address and uh, you know, we, you know, I hate to keep approving stuff if we don't have uh safety plans and in in, you know, part of the agenda to get s- s- you know, projects like this approved.
Uh, Comish- uh, Commissioner Inaba?
Okay, so I just want to circle back real quickly with regards to my concern about the rules. Um, because I feel as if this is, if this is one instance, but will it happen again when, you know, with the with the same rule in place?
Sure, I understand your question. Um, so when we sat down to speak with Office of Housing and Community Development, uh, part of the discussion was, uh, you know, now that we're aware that the Affordable Housing Production Program is in place, and this is a funding source that a lot of affordable housing developers are going to be using, we we want to change our condition language to not lock them in to the as represented, which means they can't use this funding source. So really, the intention uh of of this was um multifold, but part of it was to make sure that when folks like H I C D C come in to develop affordable housing, they they can access this funding source. Uh, and again, um, these amendments and and the next agenda item is going to be almost exactly the same. These amendments uh are meant to uh address H I C D C and other affordable housing developers' ability to um access this funding source. And so the affordable housing condition language that I read out, that's our new standard affordable housing condition language. Um, and so the way that it's written, it will um get rid of that issue with uh the inability to use the funding source.
So basically, you're, this is setting a precedence moving forward?
Correct, so uh we recently, there there was a project in Hilo um that also uh the other, the other benefit or the other purpose of this uh change to the standard condition language. the other, the other benefit or the other purpose of this, uh, change to the standard condition language is to help encourage other developers who maybe don't necessarily do only affordable housing, but wanna offer more than the minimum twenty percent. So the, the way the condition language is written is if they go fifty to a hundred percent affordable, then we can give them relief from fair share. So that's the other benefit of this condition language as written. So as you have more, uh, rezones come in front of you in the future, this will be the standard condition language that you'll see. There may be some tweaks. I know there's been some discussion up at County Council to maybe tweak some of the language, but the, the intent and the overall format will remain the same.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. And I guess that's where my concern is, is if this is a rule that is within the county, it's not like a federal rule outside of, um, the county's control. I just wondered if there was something that could be done to get that changed so you're not having to work around something. But I mean, it looks like you've done a lot of the work. I just don't wanna see good organizations like HICD having to endure this moving forward because they deserve one hundred percent of our support because of the good work they do.
For sure. And just, uh, if, if we or the applicant were aware of the, the rules for the funding source before we wrote the condition, we would have written it differently. And so it was, it was kind of a, oh, my gosh moment when they went to try and access this funding source and they were told at that time that they couldn't because of the rules. So now that we're aware of it, we're trying to address it through this, uh, this standard condition change. And, uh, again, like you say, we're setting that precedent moving forward. So any other affordable housing developer that comes in, well, with the way the condition language is written, will be able to access the county's funding source.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Inaba. I wanna make another comment to further, um, uh, address Commissioner Rodriguez, uh, two, two concerns. You know, your concern about price and your concern about, uh, like an evacuation plan, it's kinda tied in. Mr. McCumber cannot give a price on these units because it's tied into funding and it's also tied into any other things that they have to build into the project. So if they have to do more, um, let's say, for example, electrical wire, um, hardening or they have to do stoplights or wider or, or just any, any more than they have to do. And if they're limited on their funding, it makes it more unaffordable. So I just wanted to make that comment. You know, HICDC is very creative on finding funding sources and they, their goal is to make it truly affordable. They are one of the true developers in, in, on this island that really wanna make it affordable for our Hawaii people. So just wanted to make that comment. If there's no more comments or questions, um, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes, uh, um, is there anything in the rules or, uh, where it says that, you know, about safety, you know, uh, is there anything that has, you know, if we're gonna approve something? Cause if we approve this one and then they wanna do more and then we don't have a evacuation plan and safety plan, is there anything that legally that, you know, it, you know, we could say no or, or, or say, I'll prove it, but you had to present us with a safety plan?
So Mr. K can ma, maybe elaborate more than on that, but, um, I can say that, you know, this is one part of the process that a developer needs to go through. And once they get farther along the process, they have to go through Department of Public Works, Department of Health, um, to concern all, uh, uh, to address every agency's safety concern. So Mr. K, you wanna elaborate on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to go through the other conditions of approval of the ordinance here to see if there's anything explicit that speaks to that. So I think the, the one that's kind of tangentially applicable is, uh, Condition L that requires the applicant to provide a civil defense siren. So from a, from a emergency safety standpoint, uh, that will be there. I think again, uh, based on the proximity to the, uh, volunteer fire station right next door and based on the availability of an evacuation route through the adjacent subdivisions and the applicant's representation that they are going to, um, implement, uh, an evacuation program. I, I think that, uh, abs, absent something in the ordinance, that those are all pieces of information that can hopefully give you, uh, some, you know, kind of add, address your questions. I don't know if, uh, Mr. McCumber wants to speak further to that or, or not?
Sure, I, I mean, and I think I understand the nature of the commissioner's question. I don't know that there's any specific requirement of having a safety or evacuation plan. I think that, that said, you know, in light of kind of, you know, wildfires that are popping up everywhere, you know, it's definitely something that we're considering. And, and through the design process, as Christian mentioned, uh, fire will also have to be one of the agencies that reviews it. And it's been some time since we've routed plans through the fire department. So I'm not sure if, what their requirements will be when we finally circulate design to them. So, you know, it could very be, very well be that, you know, we, there will be some very specific conditions. But I, I just don't know because typically it's project to project and sometimes fire will require certain things on a project that, that they don't require on another project, so.
Director Darrow, um, I see that you came up, would you like to have a few words? Aloha.
Aloha Chair Al and Vice Chair Nobori Kawa and members of the Leeward Planning Commission, Jeff Darrow with the Planning Department. I just wanna kind of, um, re, rein this in a bit. We, this application as well as the next application had, has already gone through major review. It came before the Planning Commission, it went before the County Council for approval. There was a lot of discussion about a lot of issues, including this very issue. This particular, um, location of where this development is has an evacuation route. It has two ways to get to the property. So there is, um, an active alternative, uh, evacuation route. You can go out to the highway or Koi High Road in two different manners, which is, um, so this thing, this, this particular development is not landlocked to one access. It can, it, it has alternatives. So that's a, a good thing for this particular development. But I wanna mention that typically we try not to open the door to look at everything, um, as a whole when we're looking at very, at something that's been agendized for a very specific, um, condition amendment. So I just wanted to, again, bring that to your attention. And this has gone through everything already, the conditions are in there. Hopefully, as you mentioned, Chair, there's been massive amounts of discussion regarding wildfire mitigation and measures. And we're hoping that those are gonna become law and in, put into code and into our codes. So as we do subdivisions, as we do, um, roadways, all of those particular, um, issues will be addressed in those developments. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Darrow. So we do have a motion on the floor, um, for our favorable recommendation to the County Council. And I just wanna make it clear to our commissioners that we're voting on, um, the agenda item. We're voting on the amendments to Condition M and amendments to Condition N. So let's go ahead and take a roll call vote, Ms. Jackson, unless commissioners have any more comments or questions? Nope, okay, Ms. Jackson, please roll call.
Mr. Jackson, no worries. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Aye.
Commissioner Inaba?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Uh, yes.
And Chair Al?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, motion carries with four aye votes and three excused.
Okay, you'll be notified in writing. Why don't we just go ahead and go to the second agenda item? Applicant HICDC PL dash REZ twenty twenty-five zero 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 eight zero. Amendment PL REZ twenty twenty-three zero 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 five four. Applicant for an amendment to Condition K, Affordable Housing and Condition I, Fair Share Contribution of Change of Zone Ordinance Number twenty-four dash thirty-seven, which amended ordinance number ten dash one oh one, which reclassifies approximately eighteen point three eight acres of land from an agricultural twenty acre to a single-family residential fifteen thousand square foot RS fifteen, single-family residential ten thousand square foot RS ten, singly fa, single-family residential seven thousand five hundred foot RS seven point five and open zoning district. The property is situated along the north Makai side of Akuni Pule Highway, approximately six hundred feet west of Kohala High and Elementary School Complex. Pahuahua North Kohala Hawaii TMK three five five zero one nine zero two five and zero two seven. So Mr. K, can we have staff presentation? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. A lot of this is gonna look very similar, uh, they're very similar requests. Uh, as the chair stated, these are amendments to another change of zone ordinance. Subject property is located in the North Kohala District of Hawaii Island, more specifically, uh, adjacent to the Kohala High School Complex in Kapaa. So the proposed development is, uh, to help facilitate the next phases of the Kumakua Self-Help Housing Project. And they was, include a proposed subdivision consisting of thirty-two ten thousand square foot minimum house lots, uh, one eight point one two acre bulk lot and a road lot. The first two phases of this project included the construction of forty-four self-help homes. So again, these are the, the final phases of this, uh, this larger project. For reference, uh, here is the applicant's site plan, uh, showing the proposed subdivision. If you can see here on the upper right-hand corner, uh, closer to the highway here are the first two phases of the development and the area here that's, um, grayed out is the, uh, that the subject of the, the additional phases. And you can see again the, the proposed subdivision plan. Again, the applicant is requesting amendments to Condition K, Affordable Housing and Condition I, Fair Share Contribution of Change of Zone Ordinance twenty-four thirty-seven, which was approved in twenty twenty-four to grant a time extension, uh, for the applicant to secure final subdivision approval. The proposed amendment language is as follows. And again, it's deleting the, uh, previous, uh, affordable housing condition and to include that same condition language that I read in the last agenda item, uh, with the, with the changes to condition references for relief from fair share. The second is, uh, the applicant is requesting changing Condition I. Again, similarly, uh, their language is as underlined here. Should the applicant develop residential lots on the subject property? And then again, deletion of the reference to fair sh, uh, to fair share, or pardon me, to the affordable housing condition at the bottom. The applicant's reasons for the request remain the same. It's to allow them to utilize the affor, the county's Affordable Housing Production Program for the Kumakuma, Kumakua Self-Help Housing Project. I, I will dispense rereading it, they're the exact same, uh, reasons. The only thing changed in this case is at the time of their twenty twenty-three amendment, a similar condition was added, uh, based on representations that they would dedicate thirty-two of the thirty-three planned lots for affordable housing that ran afoul of the Affordable Housing Production Program rules. And so the same reasons for the request, uh, we're trying to change the, the Affordable Housing Condition Language to allow them to utilize, um, that funding source. Same, uh, the director recommends removal of the, um, introductory clause to Condition I and for the same reasons, because they're going to be creating a subdivision, uh, so residential lots will be developed. The director is, uh, requesting that the commission forward a favorable recommendation to those amendment requests with the stated modification, modification to Condition I for all of the stated reasons. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. K. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. K? Commissioner, uh, Rodriguez?
I, I, I have a question, um, say, say we, uh, we approve and, uh, we get it, uh, approved for affordable housing and the funding is not there to build the homes, could they put this, uh, uh, lots, subdivision lots on the market? You know, just for others? Cause it sounds like a good, you know, business.
So, um, just to be clear, zoning does not lock in or sanction the proposed project. Uh, zoning would allow, uh, the rights and privileges of that zoning designation, uh, for any type of permitted use within that zoning district. That said, uh, HICDC's, uh, mission and purpose is to develop affordable housing. Where they're representing, um, a, a continuation of the first phases of the Kumakua Help, Self-Help Housing Project. So given that track record, I don't think we're concerned that, uh, affordable housing or lots are not going to be developed. However, should they not be developed, they, they could be subdivided and sold, um, at, at, uh, conventional rates. They'd still be subject to the, uh, affordable housing requirements of Chapter eleven, uh, which is twenty percent. But, um, again, the way the condition is written is it allows for either eventuality. Yeah.
Um, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Thank you, Chair Al. So, uh, Mr. K, just to clarify for my understanding, um, currently, are there specific requirements for a project that comes in for affordable housing in terms of lot size? And does it, how does that compare to if they were not going to be affordable housing lots? What, okay, my line of thought is it's the same, whether you're going for affordable housing lots or regular, you know, housing lots, that your minute, the size of the lots, the minimum is going to be the same. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the, the size of the lots would be based on the zoning, uh, of the, of the project, right? And so in this case, there's, I think, three different zoning designations. There's an open designation and a single-family residential designation, uh, seventy-five hundred square feet, ten thousand square feet. The way that the proposed subdivision, uh, is laid out is consistent with those zoning designations. And just to be clear, the last amendment that came through, uh, that you guys heard again in twenty twenty-four was just a time extension to secure final subdivision approval. So the zoning hasn't changed, uh, their proposed subdivision hasn't changed. How, how those lots are, um, sold, uh, largely might be dependent on other requirements that HICDC has. And I can let Jeremy, uh, Mr. McCumber speak to that. For our purposes, uh, the, the size of lots would be largely, uh, controlled by the underlying zoning.
Okay, so, so basically, um, them coming in saying, we're gonna do affordable housing, does not give them an advantage in terms of getting an increased number of lots. It's the same as if they came in for a regular subdivision, regular prices.
That's correct. I think maybe one of the benefits for the first couple of phases and it was carried through, uh, during this third phase is there was some relief from a minimum roadway standards, uh, and curb gutter sidewalk and things like that to help ensure affordability. And so, uh, but in terms of your question, uh, no, there's no density bonus that I'm aware of, uh, because it's affordable. There are, there are other things like, uh, you know, um, water availability, it's prioritized for affordable housing. Again, relief from roadway standards sometimes through, uh, conditions of ordinances, uh, are, uh, really from roadway standards are added, added to help, again, ensure affordability. But, uh, there's no density bonus as far as I understand in this case.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister K. Thank you, Vice Chair Noborkawa. Um, at this time, the applicant. Do you have any comments, Mister McCumber?
Sure, just, just a couple to address some other things that, that I heard. So. Um, as Mister K said, yeah, we're not seeking to get any more density than any other developer subject to the code. Um, and, and then for those projects where we did have exemptions from like, you know. Roadway standards, curb gutter sidewalks, that sort of thing. There's actually a formal county process that. We go through to get the approval for that. So I just wanna make sure that it's known that, that, that also has a formal track as well. And, and we follow whatever processes are required to get the entitlements for our project. Um, the other thing is, so in terms of, you know, selling to the market. I just wanna be really transparent that, you know, for this project, the intent is to make it a hundred percent affordable. We have. Um, quite a few people that are waiting for housing in Kohala, cause it specifically is a rural area that has. A very specific population because the likelihood. Um, in terms of those that we identify on our waitlist. Is that only people that are from Kohala are going to be willing to live there. So with that particular project, it will be a hundred percent affordable. Um, it's not to say that we haven't sold property at market before. But that said, when we do that, it, it is to sort of continue the charge on our mission. So we've owned property before that we've sold at market, but our mission requires that. We use the proceeds from that to further our mission, which is specific to low and moderate income housing. So I know that, that was a question, and I just wanna make sure that. If anybody comes across that, that, you know, we don't, I don't give this absolute answer that we only sell. Or only build to affordable, but to the extent that it, it advances our programs, we, we may do that.
Thank you, Mister McCumber. Um, any, um, other questions for the applicant or for staff? If not, I'm ready to entertain a motion so we can have a discussion. Vice Chair Noborkawa?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I move that a favorable recommendation on P L R E Z twenty twenty five zero. Am I at the right one? Oh, wait, I'm at the wrong one. Uh, R E Z twenty twenty five zero 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 eight zero amend P L R E Z. Twenty twenty three zero 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 five four. Be forwarded to the county council on the applicant's proposed amendments to condition I fair share contribution. And condition K affordable housing to change of zone ordinance number twenty four dash thirty seven. Approved in twenty twenty four to grant a time extension for the applicant to secure. Final subdivision approval based on the planning director's recommendations, which shall be adopted.
Can I get a second?
I second.
Okay, uh, motion was made by Vice Chair Noborkawa, seconded by Commissioner Inaba. Um, any discussions for the motion makers? No, um, I'm just trying to make a comment. Uh, H I C D C, H I C D C is a great organization that. Helps the community. These self-help programs are amazing. If any of you commissioners have ever gone through any of these. It's such a good feeling when everybody comes together and builds these homes for that individual, and it's just, it's, it's an awesome. Um, uh, thing that H I C D C is doing, so I fully support this motion. With that said, if no one, no comments or questions or concerns, uh, Commissioner Inaba, no. Um, Mister K?
Chair Al.
Oh.
Uh, excuse me, just for the record, before you take the vote, um, there's no in-person testifiers for this item, but I'm not sure if there are on Zoom.
Okay, uh, do we have any Zoom testifiers for this agenda item?
Chair R, Chair Al, we have no Zoom testifiers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Mister K, roll call vote, please.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. On the motion to send a favorable recommendation, uh, Vice Chair Noborkawa?
Aye.
Commissioner Inaba?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Chair Al?
Aye.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Motion carries with four aye votes and three excused.
Okay, thank you, Mister McCumber. You will be notified in writing. Mahalo. Uh, at this time, let's go ahead and take a, uh, five-minute recess. And the time is ten forty-eight, and we'll be back at eleven oh five. Thank you.
Maya?
Hi, Jessica, can you remove the recess slide, please?
Okay, we're bringing back the meeting to order. The time is eleven oh one. Uh, today's Thursday, um. The Leeward County Commission on August twenty first. Um, so the next agenda item. Is agenda item number five. Uh, do we have any testifiers for agenda item number five in person or on Zoom?
We have no one in person.
Okay, so agenda item number five initiator county council initiated P L dash C C I twenty twenty five zero 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 one one. The county council has referred bill fifty-two, a bill for an ordinance to amend chapter twenty-five zoning, article one, article four, and article five. Of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty-three, two thousand and six edition as amended related to. henries. Is that how you say it? Henries. The zoning code does not currently allow for henries to be located within the residential zoning district. The purpose of this bill is to allow for henries to establish in residential zoning districts under defined conditions. Okay, can we have staff presentation please?
Thank you Chair, please hold while I get the presentation up. Okay. So as the chair mentioned, this is a county council initiated bill which is an amendment to chapter twenty five relating to zoning district regulations for household henries. The purpose of Bill fifty two, the Hawaii County Council introduced Bill fifty two, which introduces a new section to the county zoning code to allow for household henries. The purpose of this bill is to establish clear and consistent zoning regulations for household henries within the residential zoning districts. It defines what a household henry is and it proposes standards addressing the location, size and operation of household henries to support self sufficiency in urban and residential areas, safeguard public health and welfare and promote compatibility with surrounding properties. The proposed amendments to chapter twenty five begin with by add, by adding a definition of household henries to the zoning code. Household henries will mean that it's a parcel or lot where female chickens, turkeys, ducks, geese or other poultry are kept, raised and maintained for the non-commercial production and consumption of egg eggs. Bill fifty two also seeks to add a new section to the zoning code which would be labeled as section twenty five four dash seventeen household henries. Key highlights of this section include household henries are permitted in the RS, RD, RM and RCX districts subject to the following regulations. The first one is that hens must be confined to a coop, cage, hut, hen house, fenced area or other enclosure. It shall be no closer than twenty feet from any residential district other than the RA district and it shall comply with the yard requirements of the specific zoning district. In addition, the number of hens may not exceed A, which is two hens allowed for the first three thousand square feet and B, one hen for every additional one thousand square feet. So for example, if you have a five thousand square foot lot, you could have approximately four hens total. In addition, roosters may not be kept on a household henry and the cell of hens or eggs from a household henry is prohibited. Proposed amendments continue on to the specific zoning districts on your screen. This amendment will add household henries as a permitted use in the specific zoning districts such as the single family residential districts, double family residential districts, multiple family residential districts and the residential commercial mixed use districts which we like to obviously say it as RS, RD, RM and RCX. So at this time, the planning director is making a recommendation that the planning commission send a favorable recommendation of Bill fifty two to the county council with the following suggested revisions. The first recommendation is the planning director is recommending that we revise the definition of household henry to state that an outdoor site on a parcel or a lot that is an accessory used to a dwelling where female chickens and we remove the turkeys, ducks, geese or other poultry are kept, raised and maintained for the non-commercial production and consumption of eggs. This is to clarify that a household henry shall be a residential accessory use for personal egg production. The revision supports zoning goals by excluding larger or disruptive poultry like ducks and geese which may cause noise, odor and sanitation issues. This also addresses concerns that were raised by the Department of Research and Development's comments. Recommendation two is that we refine the enclosure standards in section twenty five four dash seventeen by removing fenced area from the list of acceptable enclosures and replace it with clearer language such as fully enclosed area or other secured space. The term fenced area did imply that it was a partially enclosed space which would increase the risk of free ranging birds and other nuisances and public health health issues. Therefore, we are recommending that we replace it with clearer terms like fully enclosed area or other secured space to promote responsible poultry management and support neighborhood compatibility as well as help reduce noise, odor and sanitation concerns. Recommendation number three is that we also amend the Hawaii County Code to include household henry as a permitted use in the RA zoning district. This would distinguish the small scale, non-commercial poultry keeping from intensive livestock operations which is currently allowed in the RA district. This amendment would clarify that a household henry is a low impact accessory use aligned with the rural character of the RA districts and therefore supports food self sufficiency while allowing standards such as reduced setbacks and enclosed areas within the RA district as well. And the last recommendation is that the, we are asking that we include a reference to applicable state and federal agencies that do regulate poultry keeping including the State Department of Health, State Department of Agriculture and the United States Department of Agriculture to encourage adherence with applicable best management practices for household henries. You know, and the reason is that the county doesn't regulate animal health or biosecurity. These are all handled by those state and federal agencies. By referencing those agencies, it helps clarify the county's role and guides the public to appropriate technical resources and best management practices. It also helps minimize nuisances like noise, odor, waste and pests, ensuring safe and compatible hen keeping within the residential areas. So the next steps, the Winward and Leeward Planning Commissions are required to take action on Bill fifty two and transmit their recommendations to the council by September seventeen, twenty twenty five. The commissions shall recommend approval in whole or in part with or without modifications or rejection of the proposed bill. Each commission's recommendation will be forwarded separately but at the same time to the county council for their consideration and decision. And in the event that the commission fails to act on the proposed bill by this date, such inaction will be considered as an unfavorable recommendation by the commission. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Camaro. Any questions for staff from commissioners? Commissioner Inaba?
Good morning. Thank you for your presentation. I'm just wondering who will be the agency that has to enforce this rule?
That's a great question. So we will be enforcing, I am assuming where the setbacks will be. I'm not too sure if Director Darrell wants to discuss how our enforcement officers will be counting each chicken. But there are other agencies such as the State Department of Health that do regulate the cell of eggs. They do have their own requirements.
Aloha, Jeff Darrow with the planning department. Did, did I hear you correctly how we would be counting the chickens?
Yes.
How we would be counting the chickens? Okay. So that was one of our concerns when this bill was brought out. Obviously, you know, planning is a kind of a catch-all department. We address land use, uses where they're permitted, where they're prohibited. So when different, you know, the commission or the department or the council wants to make considerations of allowing additional uses, the zoning code is the place that typically it would be placed in. We recently had the bill that allowed apiaries and that was across the board in all zoning districts. Right now, you're allowed to have them in agricultural zones, right? That's typical. But they wanted to allow the ability for people to raise hens and provide eggs and means in residential zoning. So this bill came forward. Our concern, one of our concerns is obviously we're not a regulatory enforcement agency for this type of thing. Under recommendation four, it talks about some of those agencies that will be involved. We will be involved in the sense that if we get a complaint saying somebody has too many hens or if they have roosters, those kind of things, then we will get involved in. We typically issue a courtesy letter first letting them know we've received a complaint, giving them a period of time to correct that violation. If they don't, then we move to a violation notice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? If not, I'm ready to entertain a motion so we can have a discussion. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Thank you Chair Al. I move that a favorable recommendation be forwarded to the county council on Bill number fifty two based on the planning director's recommendation findings and suggested revisions which shall be adopted.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I second.
Okay, Commissioner Inaba seconded. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa made the motion. Okay, any, any discussions? Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
I'm pretty much in favor of this bill. My, says growing up as a child, my grandmother actually raised hens to sell for, so she was commercial. She had a hundred hens as a kid. One of my daily tasks was to go collect those eggs. So I can tell you a hundred hens are pretty quiet actually. They were in a cave, they were in a coop which also makes them more protected from predators like mongooses. The complaint that we had or not complaint, the testimony that we had that was concerned about noises of the hens and the audio that was given to us, those actually are alarm calls of chickens. That's, that's even the, the roosters make that alarm call as well. The, the crowing is a, like a song for them to bring the birds together. But the, the audio was an alarm call. So basically those chickens were responding, those hens, he says they were hens, were responding to either like a mongoose, cat, a dog or even a human that's acting like a predator, like staring directly at them. They would get cautious about that, anxious about them. They would give that a call. My grandmother's hens didn't do that because they felt protected in their coop. So I don't believe that the way that this is written and the number of hens that are going to be allowed on a small property would become an issue. I also agree with this recommendation number one that only allows chickens rather than including turkeys, ducks, geese or other poultry. Definitely turkeys, ducks and geese are much more, their normal sounds are noisier than chickens. And if you have guinea fowl is the other poultry, they are really noisy. So I agree that with this reduction in the different types of poultry that are allowed to have it only restricted to chickens. And also in terms of the, you know, this supposedly for consumption of eggs. Usually people don't eat duck eggs and because they taste a little different or all of these taste a little different. Then if you have quail, they're so tiny, you have to have a whole lot of them to make it worth your while. So I agree with this recommendation that planning is also providing for this. And I think that's the, the, all, all I have to say on this, but I am in favor of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Nobori Kawa. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I'm also in favor. I'm, I have always been a farmer. We have always had chickens and so you know, during COVID, you know, eggs were scarce and you know, with high egg prices, so we didn't suffer. So you know, it's a good thing, especially living on an island, we're more sustainable. So thank you.
I do support this motion. I do have concern though. I, I've, I've lived in Hilo for twenty seven years and now I live in Waikoloa. And you know, I just want to make a comment to, to represent some of my Waikoloa neighbors. You know, if there's a chicken coop right next to my bedroom, even though it's my neighbor's yard, I, I would probably have an issue too. But I'm hoping that if this bill gets passed and there are chicken coops and chickens in areas where houses are really close, I hope every neighbor will work it out and be porno to each other. But I am in full support of this motion. Okay, if no more comments or concerns, can we take a roll call vote? Ms. Camaro?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much. The motion is to forward a favorable recommendation to the county council on Bill fifty two. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
I.
Commissioner Inaba?
I.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, sir.
And Chair Al?
I.
The motion carries four to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Agenda item number six initiator county council initiated PL dash CCI twenty twenty five zero 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 one two. The county council has referred Bill sixty three for an ordinance to amend chapter twenty five zoning, article five of the Hawaii County Code nineteen eighty three, two thousand sixteen edition as amended related to dwellings. The county code does not currently allow for dwellings to be located within the industrial, commercial, mixed use MCX district. The purpose of this bill is to allow for dwellings to be established in the MCX zoning district under permitted uses. So could we have staff presentation please?
All right. Good morning Chair, thank you. Let's see. So as you said, this is a county council initiated bill to allow dwellings in the MCX district. The request is for the Hawaii County Council has introduced Bill sixty three which seeks to amend HCC section twenty five dash five dash one thirty two A to add dwellings as a permitted use within the industrial, commercial, mixed use district. To read as follows. Dwellings, double family or duplex provided that the maximum density is one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of land area per rentable unit or dwelling unit. Dwellings, multi-family provided that the maximum density is one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet of land area per rentable unit or dwelling unit and also single family dwellings. The M six district was established in nineteen ninety six with the intent to promote and maintain a viable mix of light industrial and commercial uses. Some of the offensive industrial type uses of the MCX district includes warehousing, wholesaling and distribution of operations, light manufacturing, processing and packaging establishments and minor agricultural product processing facilities, heavy equipment sales, service and rental and automobile repair facilities. This bill supports the growing movement to create more mixed use neighborhoods where homes, shops and services can exist side by side. By encouraging these kinds of developments, we can open the door to more housing choices for local families and individuals who are feeling the strain of our ongoing housing crisis. Recent studies including the June twenty twenty three Hawaii Housing Factbook Report produced by Uhero along with state efforts like House Bill twenty ninety Act zero three seven point to multiple, multi-family housing in mixed use areas as an important part of the solution to increasing the supply of homes in Hawaii. The planning director is supportive of the intent of Bill sixty three and commends the county council for its leadership in advancing legislation that allows for dwellings to be a permitted use within the M six zoning district. The planning director is recommending the following revision to Bill sixty three to address civil defense agencies' concerns regarding proximity of possible hazardous uses on adjacent properties in the MG zoning district to new dwellings that could be established in the M six district. to new dwellings that could be established in the M-six district. And so he's proposing to add in subsection B, any dwellings within the M-six district shall have a minimum setback of two hundred feet from the property boundary adjoining any general industrial or MG district, or increase if required by the director. The table below identifies M-six zone properties and acreage in each judicial district and in relation to MG zone properties. There is a total of a hundred and seventeen M-six properties in the county with fifteen that are adjacent to MG zoning districts. Fourteen of these properties are in North Kona and one in South Hilo. Here is a snapshot of a, of the interactive map that identifies the MCX, ML, and MG districts. The map identifies three clusters here on the leeward side, um, the Kona Airport area, the Coloco Industrial area, and the Kona Commons and Old Airport area down at the bottom here. The Planning Director recommends that the Planning Commission send a favorable recommendation of Bill Sixty-three to the County Council, including the proposed language outlined in the Planning Director's amendment. Um, the next steps, both winward and leeward planning commissions are required to take action on Bill Sixty-three by transmitting their recommendations to the County Council by October first. Each commission may recommend approval of all, some, or none of the Director's suggestions. Each commission may also recommend their own revision to the bill. Both commissions' recommendations will be forwarded separately, but at the same time to the County Council for their consideration and decision. In the event a commission fails to act on the proposed bill by this date, such inaction shall be considered as an unfavorable recommendation by the commission. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tupua. Is this your first one?
Yes.
Good job. Thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tupu? Commissioner Rodriguez?
I- is there a such a, is there a demand for, uh, you know, people want to put a residential house in a industrial area, or?
So this is kind of setting it. So there's no other county in Hawaii either that allows it. This is kind of starting it off.
Commissioner Rodriguez, I also wanted to let the commission know that, um, Councilmember Onishi is on Zoom. He's the initiator of this bill, so he may be able to answer that question.
Okay. Um, Mr. Onishi, are you on Zoom? Can we bring you up, please?
Hold on. Yes, um, I am.
Okay, we can't see you, but can you raise your right hand so I can swear again? Do you swear to tell the truth in front of the Leeward Planning Commission today?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead, Mr. Onishi.
Well, to his question.
Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the initiator of this bill? Uh, sorry, uh, um, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah, uh, good morning. Uh, um, i- is there a, a demand that, you know, people want to do residential on a industrial area that, that you proposed this bill?
Oh, it's not really like a residential. To me, it's like a, like a working force. So where you have businesses in these certain districts, and so to help with the affordable housing and to help with the housing crisis we have. This would help with businesses to have, you know, housing for their employees, which is maybe closer, closer in distance where they might be able to walk, but then also to help relieve traffic. And how, all this started to was because back in like two thousand ten or eleven, there was an emergency proclamation that was done for, for, uh, homeless shelter in the old Kona Industrial Area by where, uh, Kona Brew is. So I felt that if we're going to allow homeless shelter there for people to stay, why can't we have housing for the employees of the businesses? That didn't go forward, then this past year, your commission, your board, your body approved where it was allowed to have hospitals, uh, senior, like senior housing. And so now I thought this is the time that we can have families of dwellings put into now. And now I think with, with offering this, this might be triggering, like I said, companies to look into having housing so that the employees can be closer to work and relieving traffic on the roadways. Hope that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Um, any other questions for Mr. Onishi, or I know Mr. Daro is here. Would you like to say something, Mr. Daro, regarding this, um, this agenda item?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Al. Jeff Daro with the Planning Department. So this is, um, this bill was brought forward by the, uh, Vice Chair Onishi. And it was, again, as he had mentioned, in response to a planning concept that we've been trying to implement, not only in this particular zoning district, but in commercial zonings. In the ML and the MG, we do not allow for residences, but MCX is what they call commercial, light, industrial mix. It's, it's, the use is when you look at it, a ninety-plus percent commercial, very little industrial. So it made sense to bring in that, uh, allowance of dwellings. And the, the concept is, is that you want to create uh, an option where people can live, work, and play in a particular area. And as mentioned, you're trying to bring them from far away into areas so that they don't have to drive hours to get to work. They can work, they can, they, they may not even need a car. They can live on site, they can walk to where they got to go, they can use available transportation, uh, to move around. Um, this is, uh, something much needed in the MCX zoning district. When you look at the table that, um, Moki had put in the background, you'll see there's not very much MCX zoning on our island, very limited. One of the concerns that came up through this process was a concern about safety being too close to a heavy industrial area. So in working with, um, both, uh, the Vice Chair and Civil Defense, we added that condition that says no, uh, dwellings within two hundred feet of any adjoining, uh, hot, heavy industrial zoning to the MCX. Now, in looking at that, you'll find there's very little of that. You'd, you don't see that, that combination very much around the island. So that's going to come up very seldom, if it does at all. Uh, so again, we're just trying to provide these options. Ironically, uh, we find ourselves at times, there's, there's a, uh, an allowance in the ML and MG zoning district, which is light industrial and heavy industrial, that says you can do a watchman quarters or a custodian in the ems- in the, in the industrial zonings if it's connected to the development. So we'll get, uh, occasionally we'll get like a self-storage facility, and it has a unit in it. And we're like, eh, well, you guys trying to throw in a, a dwelling unit here? And they're like, oh, no, that's for our live-in watchmen. And so you find that they, they're looking for that option to be able to have somebody stay on site, uh, be able to operate the business and be caretakers and custodians and watchmen of that particular facility. This will allow something a little bit more, obviously, in the MCX. It isn't intended to all of a sudden, uh, you know, open up the door for like people to use, uh, like they do in commercial zonings, uh, where you do apartment complexes. Um, there's not that much MCX around the island, but it does allow the option for that concept of having commercial and residential combined. Anyway, hope that helps a little. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daro. Any other questions for Mr. Onishi or staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion so we can have a discussion. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Uh, thank you, Chair Al. I move that a favorable recommendation be forwarded to the County Council on Bill Number Sixty-three, based on the Planning Director's recommendation findings and suggested revisions which shall be adopted.
I'll second.
Okay, um, motion was made by Vice Chairman Nobori Kawa, seconded by Commissioner Inaba. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, you have any comments?
Uh, it, to me, when I read this and listening to the presentations, it sounds like a lot of thought has been put in, put into this in terms of allowing something, um, allowing more, uh, residential in an area that we didn't have it in before, but also having some, uh, basically restrictions to make it safer for the people that are living there by, uh, first of all, not allowing them in the MG and ML areas, and only in the lowest of the, um, there was a term in here, it didn't say obnoxious, I can't remember the term now, but they, you know, that, the more, the places that people would be less likely to want to live because of the things that are going on. So it's reduced to the one that is the least obnoxious of all of those, uh, and then has that setback from the MG to make it even safer for them. So it looks like a lot of thought was put into this. And, um, I, I am in favor of this, uh, new bill. Thank you.
Commissioner Inaba?
So the permitting of dwellings, um, in these mixed-use districts, in my opinion, will provide much-needed housing. Um, also walkable mixed-use, um, use of the area. And I think most importantly, too, encouraging, um, home-based businesses or new businesses, um, which will in turn really help the overall prosperity of our community. Um, so thank you to the author of this, and I, I, I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Um, I'm also in favor, uh, you know, if it's for a commercial and, and residential, uh, I don't know about industrial and have, having that in there. But, uh, you know, I have seen this in Arizona and, uh, uh, neighborhood, uh, Barado, it's a wak- wakoa neighborhood. And people have their coffee shop and then on top, you know, that's, they have their, uh, living quarters, so I think it's a good thing, you know, makes a more of a wakoa neighborhood, so, thank you.
Uh, I'm also in full support of this motion, and, um, I like what Mr. Daro said about, you know, giving the community options. Um, you know, this, this bill is going to give everybody options. It's going to give the workers, it's going to give the businesses, it's going to give our roads, alleviate our roads, so we can save our roads, because it costs money to pave and fix these roads. Um, it's just gonna, it's just gonna, uh, benefit the community in a whole. And what I'm really happy about is it's going to bring, it's going to bring services to our island, to com- to, to areas that need those services, and you know, services and jobs and housing, it's just, it's just going to address a lot of different issues. And I know the County Council has a lot to work out with this bill, but, um, I'm in full support of it. So if there's no comments, can we go ahead and? Ms. Jackson, do you have a comment?
Chair, for the record, there's nobody signed up to testify on this item.
Thank you for always reminding me, Ms. Jackson. So, um, Mr. Tupua, go ahead, and we'll take a roll call vote unless Commissioners have any con- questions, comments? Nope? Okay, go ahead.
All right, so the motion is for a favorable recommendation to the County Council. We'll start off with, um, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa.
Aye.
Councilmember Inaba?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh, yes.
And Chair Al?
Aye.
All right, motion carries four with three excuses.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Okay, so the next agenda item is Agenda Item Number Seven, Discussion on Letterhead Updates and Recommendations for Olelo Hawaii Inclusion. Recommendation to the Mayor by Vice Chair Nobori Kawa to include Olelo Hawaii alongside English on letterheads for relevant departments and groups such as Planning Commission. Is there a staff presentation, or do we have any Zoom or in-person testifiers?
Chair, there's no testifiers on this item. And either I or the Director can provide you an update on where we're at.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Just give me one moment. Okay, so, um, at the last meeting, uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa made a motion, um, and the motion was fairly broad. It talked about incorporating, uh, Olelo Hawaii into all communications related to land use and planning that come from the Planning Commission. And, um, so one of the things that the department would like clarity on is uh, whether, whether the commission just wants to focus on changing their letterhead, um, or whether they really want us to look at broadening the inclusion of Olelo into things like, you know, having a Hawaiian version of the agenda, or, um, you know, providing reports in Olelo Hawaii. So we just need more clarification on the extent of what the commission is asking for. Uh, also wanted to let you know that we did some research into, uh, who could do those translations for us. Uh, the Department of Research and Development did have a staff member that, that could do those types of translations, but they no longer have that person on staff. Um, then I found out that the Office of Sustainability, um, OSCAR is the acronym. They ha- also have a new staff person on, but that person is, um, on sabbatical right now to complete a PhD program. So, uh, the, the next option was to look at the UH Hilo Hawaiian Studies Program to see if there's somebody there that could assist. And I would be happy to reach out to them, um, depending on to what extent the commission wants to see Olelo incorporated into their communications.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Um, so Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, uh, uh, made, made a motion last meeting two months ago to defer. And, um, do you have any mana'o? Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, on how we should proceed?
Yes, thank you, Chair Al, and thank you, Ms. Jackson, for all your research. So, um, at the very minimum, I would like to see us change, change our letterhead so that we include uh, the Leeward Planning Commission as i- in Olelo Hawaii, below the English version of, uh, Leeward Planning Commission. And also do it on the website where we have, uh, things put out with the leader, on the leader, on behalf of the Leeward Planning Commission, also include, uh, the name in Olelo Hawaii. Going forward, once we get, we find out, uh, that we have more, uh, resources, including, meaning people within the, the county government or a sub-agreement we have with the University of Hilo, uh, University of Hawaii at Hilo with the Hawaiian Studies, um, it would be great to see like our agendas come out. I'm thinking, you know, we start with the baby I'm thinking, you know, we start with the baby step of changing the letterhead. And it doesn't have to be a, something that costs us money. One of the jurisdictions that I worked for, we did, we actually changed our logo, which is a major thing compared to just changing your name slightly. And what they did in order to minimize the cost was, when you have to change your print, when you use printed letterhead, when you have to change that letterhead because you've run out, or there's been a change in administration, and so you got to change the name of the county executive anyway, you change to that letterhead. Vehicles, when you're, you take one out of service, you get a new one in, you put the new logo. You don't go and change the logo on the old car, you just put the new logo on the new car. So it can be done with the minimal amount of cost to make those changes. It'll just be like a progressive type of thing. So there's going to be a short period where there might be some things that have it and some things that don't. But, and that was looking at it as, you know, county-wide thing. With us here, because of our, the kuliana of this commission is basically, no, we can't go change the entire county, we can only do things for the Planning Commission and also make recommendations to, you know, Director Darrow. So that's where I want to start. And I'm hoping that for the future, it provides incentive for other departments to do this, a similar type of thing, and for the county itself to look forward to this. Because, I mean, it's, nineteen seventy-eight is when the state legislature passed that resolution that said that we're going to reestablish Olelo Hawaii as the language in this, in this state. And very little has been done. So I would like to take, help us make that first step in moving towards that re-establishment of Olelo Hawaii. And I'd say re-establishment, because, you know, prior to, prior to the overthrow, that was the official language. So we are reestablish, we're not, you know, doing something new, we are re-establishing what used to exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Nobori Kawa. Yeah, I support it, and I thank you for bringing up this discussion months, months ago. I think the idea of doing it gradually is good. You know, people don't like change, instant change, but if we just do it gradually and, you know, add names, well, we're not adding, we're just putting in the Olelo. And, you know, I like that idea. I like the idea that you said to hire people that can translate in Hawaiian on staff at various agencies in the colony. I think that's great, you know, we need to get our local, our local PhD, Hawaiian PhD people to stay here. And if we can offer them a county job, or if they're, or if they want to be part of changing the language on county documents, that's even great. And I just think it's a, it's a great thing for the community. So thank you very much for that. And I do agree with just doing it gradually again. Any other comments from anybody else on the commission? Vice Chairman Nobori Kawa, do you have any more comments? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Al. So the final thing I want to say is, I don't have a, personally have thought about what that wording should be, because I don't want to be that person on social media that has that tattoo of that Kanji that's, I thought, said something really cool, but it's actually something frivolous. So I will leave it up to the people who are more expert in the language. I'm taking Duolingo Hawaiian, I'm at level twenty-one, there's a hundred and sixty levels. So I'm like at the two-year-old level, so I'm not even going to attempt to figure out what that language might be. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, this is not a voting item, we're just discussing, right? Okay, commissioners, any more discussion? I guess the planning department knows how we're going to move forward. Maybe we just start off, let's start off with the letterhead and the website. So is this going to be like an ongoing discussion what we're going to have? Or is it just going to, we just kind of suggest to the planning director, like, how are we going to move forward with this, Maya, or Ms. Jackson?
We'd be happy to take those suggestions under consideration, and I would just defer to Corporation Council if any action is needed.
Okay, so you've agreed, I think, to start with the letterhead, correct?
Yes, and the website, letterhead and, I guess, the first page, or the opening page of the website.
And website. I think if the department's amenable to that, there's no voting that really needs to occur. But there were some other things that you were going to continue to research. So perhaps it would just be a report back, or could be part of the director's report at a future meeting?
We can certainly let the commission know if additional resources become available to build the capacity to increase Olelo. But I think at this point in time, Vice Chair mentioned that the main thing to work on is changing the letterhead and the website. And if Director Darrow's amenable to that, then we would be able to do it. Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're moving on our agenda, let's just go down to the planning director's report. Ms. Jackson or staff, do we have a report on anything, any issues, or any things you want to bring up in the SMA?
Yeah, so there were three SMA reports provided to the commission for the last three months, showing the approvals that have been issued by the director on behalf of the Planning Commission. Those are on your Chromebooks and were provided to you previously. We also do have one person on Zoom who would like to testify on the reports.
Can we have, please have the Zoom testifier? And could I please see you so I can swear you in?
Ms. Rohr?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you able to turn on your camera?
No, I'm not. I signed in without. I'm raising my hand. I'm ready to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Leeward Planning Commission?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes, and I'll let you know, and you have thirty seconds remaining. You can begin.
I'm testifying first on the planning director's SMA report for June. PL SAA twenty-two-five-zero-zero-zero-two-seven-eight. Aloha, Chair and Commissioners. The SMA use permit application requested approval for the construction of fifteen separate structures, dwelling pods, and related improvements, and to consolidate and re-subdivide the existing subdivision into a new configuration in the Nani Pani'au subdivision located at the southernmost end of Puakoe Beach Drive, South Kohala, for an evaluation of ten million dollars. The planning director has usurped the Leeward Planning Commission's authority under Chapter 205A and the commission's SMA rules. And on June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, he unilaterally approved the SMA use permit application when an SMA major permit procedure is automatically triggered. This application was approved under the erroneous basis that the proposed development is consistent with the approval granted under SMA use permit number three-two-six nineteen ninety-one. SMA three-two-six was approved in nineteen ninety-one by the Planning Commission to allow for the development of a ten-lot residential subdivision, the construction of the Puakoe Beach Drive extension, and a private subdivision road, Pani'au Place, over eastments on the ten newly created parcels. Contrary to the planning director's approval letter, SMA three-two-six did not include approval for development of individual lots. I have emailed a copy of SMA three-two-six to LPC testimony. The director bypassed normal SMA procedures to distribute the application to county and state agencies for comment and to give public notice and hold hearings of the Planning Commission that would have elicited comments from the Department of Environmental Management and Puakoe for Reef's Community Organization dedicated to saving Puakoe's reefs. The director used unlawful rulemaking.
We have thirty seconds left. Ms. Rohr, are you still on Zoom? Jessica, is Ms. Rohr still on Zoom?
Hello, I'm sorry.
She's still there. I think, Ms. Rohr, my apologies, you can continue.
Did you mute me?
Ms. Rohr, I accidentally hit the mute button. My apologies, I'll restart your time from where you stopped.
Where did I stop?
You have thirty seconds left.
But where did you mute me? What was the last thing I said? I, okay, I'm going to go on. I think this is unfair. Okay, the erroneous basis for approving the residential development was based on unsupported assumption that issuance of SMA major permits for large projects did take into consideration the cumulative impacts of the entire project, including future residential construction. Very concerning is that the proposed site plan does not locate the septic systems on shoreline lots with alkaline ponds covered by an alkaline management plan in an area known for dying reefs caused by pollution traced back to area's septic systems. I've emailed supporting documents to the LP testimony email. I'm now going to testify about planning director's report for July. PL SAA twenty-two-five-zero-zero-zero-two-eight-eight. The director approved it.
I'm sorry, this is one item on the agenda, so you have three minutes to speak on all three planning directors' reports.
No, I don't, because he is behind in publishing them. Because you guys have failed to be meeting, so there's three up there, and it's not one agenda item. I'm going to go on. Or Chair, point of order, may I have permission?
Ms. Rohr, please, I'll let you testify, so please, please go on.
Okay, thank you. PL SAA twenty-two-five-zero-zero-zero-two-eight-eight. The director approved this SMA use permit application for renovation and expansion of the Keo Ho Airport Fuel Storage and Facility at an evaluation of forty-four million dollars on the basis that is covered under Special Management Area Use Permit Number three-two-five-nineteen ninety-one. This is a thirty-four-year-old permit. This SMA approval allows for, among other things, expansion of the aviation fuel tank secondary containment area to accommodate the installation of two more two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-gallon storage tanks with room for a future third tank of similar size and installation of two spill containment basins and oil-water separators for appropriate handling of stormwater collected around the facility. It appears to me from the site plan that the oil-water separator drains treated polluted, formerly polluted stormwater into a drain. Oil-water separators are industrial wastewater treatment units triggering an EA requirement under HRS Section three-four-three-five-A-nine-A. Is this a new use that is not covered by SMA three-two-five nineteen ninety-one? I believe it is. I think at this point, the commission should really consider whether the planning director is exceeding his administrative discretion in using these very, very old permits and not even allowing the public notice in time to disagree with him and challenge him at the Board of Appeals. These notices come out late, more than thirty days after. He doesn't even list the SMA permit that according to his report is covered under. He could at least do that. You should request that he, any time that he says SMA assessment application is covered on his report, that he lists the actual SMA permit number and make the permit available on Epic. I had to wait two weeks to get some of these SMA permits because they're so old. Anyway, I think this is just unlawful rulemaking and should be addressed because it's usurping your authority. You are the authority under two-oh-five-A. Thank you. The director only has administrative authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rohr, for your testimony. Any commissioners, do you have any questions, or Director Darrow, would you like to follow up? I do have a question. So can you just go through the, briefly, the process of approving SMEs? And just share with, just share with the commission what we need to know about the approval or disapproval of SMEs?
Sure, thank you, Chairman Al. Again, Jeff Darrow with the Planning Department. So typically, the Planning Commission has the authority to oversee the permitting process for the Special Management Area through HRS two-oh-five-A. In the county, that's under Rule, Planning Commission Rule Nine, as well as our Planning Department rules. We have rules within there regarding enforcement. The, there are three usually different outcomes that could occur with an SMA request. One would be an exemption. These exemptions are listed both in the rule and in law. And they may not be your typical exemption that we may be used to, like something that really is like non-substantive. These may be actually substantive. It identifies under the section of definitions what development is and what development is not. And it's, if it, even though it's development in our eyes, they're saying under the rules, that does not qualify as development under the SMA rules. Those are exemptions. So for instance, a single-family dwelling, if it's not located along the shoreline and it's with, it's under seventy-five-hundred square feet, it would be exempt. And we could issue an exemption for that. We have a process, rather than having everybody within the SMA come in and submit an assessment application for a project, the staff can review it during building permit. And if it is in the SMA, but it's not along the shoreline, we have a short-form exemption that they can do, rather than the applicant having to do that. The law has changed. It changes pretty consistently year by year regarding SMA. So our most recent change now says that any development along the shoreline needs a permit. It's not exempt. So if it's in regards to development- So if it's uh in regards to development, like this, even a single-family dwelling. So if if something is over five-hundred-thousand dollars, it'll trigger an SMA major. And that comes before the Planning Commission. That's why you've had an increase of SMA requests asking for single-family dwellings along the shoreline around the island. Uh before, that never really did occur. The other change that happened is instead of uh away from uh the shoreline, the value has increased from five-hundred to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for development outside of a single-family dwelling. So those are the most recent changes. We do have um projects that are um have SMA majors that are, you know, have been around for a long time. Good example is the resort uh areas. They are covered like Waikoloa is covered under SMA twenty-five. That SMA was approved for that resort development. It's ongoing development. That SMA covers it uh for the entire development. The first application that Ms. Roar uh referred to was a project that received an SMA major for a ten-lot subdivision and related improvements, including all of the single-family dwellings uh on those lots. What happened, um there was development before on there. Now they're coming in for more dwellings on that. Before, we would not require them to come in for an assessment because they already had an SMA major. But with the change in law, we require any development that's along the shoreline to at least come in with an assessment so we can assess it. So that's what we did in this particular case. And in our assessment, have determined that this project was covered under the original SMA major that was approved previously. So it's, it's not an issue of value. It's not an issue of uh you know, any other issue other than this already went through the SMA permit process and was approved by the Planning Commission. The planning department did not or so, or usurp our, your authority because we were just, again, requiring any development, even if it received a major, to come in for an assessment along the shoreline. The other project that Ms. Roar referred to was, is a ongoing uh large project, which is the Kona uh airport. They have um been approved for a Kona Airport Master Plan, which was covered under uh SMA three twenty-five as she um had referred to. We actually had concerns about this request. We had a very large meeting with representatives from the Department of Transportation, from the planning department, their consultants, because we were questioning whether or not these requested improvements were covered under the original master plan. So they were able to show us that these were um approved under the original uh master plan. But they did also, uh just before this, um had a meeting with, I I think there was at least a hundred people on that meeting, um talking about their uh updated master plan that they're working on right now and will be submitting. And at that time, they're going to come in for a new environmental impact uh review as well as a new updated SMA. And so they, we, it's not like we just took this for granted and and rubber-stamped it. We really took our time to review this, to meet with them, to make sure that this was uh up and up and on board and covered. And so I do agree with Ms. Roar that on this particular log that we should reference the SMA major, and I apologize for that. I didn't realize that we were not doing that. And we will, uh I will uh speak with staff and ask to make sure that we address uh that SMA major. Hope that um clarifies things.
Thank you, Mr. Darrow. Any questions by commissioners? Okay, well, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, um do we have a long agenda for the next meeting?
You have three items tentatively scheduled, three.
So when is our next meeting?
Um that would be
Eighteenth.
September eighteenth, Thursday.
So far, do we have quorum or we don't know yet?
Uh we do not know yet.
Okay. So commissioners here, please mark your calendars. Thursday, September eighteenth. Uh there we go. Any announcements?
No Chair, no other announcements.
Okay, with no, with no further things to discuss at today's Leeward Planning Commission, um I'm glad we had a meeting today. I'm glad we had quorum. Um could I get a motion to adjourn? Vice Chair Nobukawa?
Uh thank you, Chair Al. I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Rodrigue, seconded. Um all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good day and mahalo.
The closed captions transcript will be terminated shortly. Those who wish to save the transcript should do so now.